Six eighteen on Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. This first, I'm gonna note for the record, I am conducting this meeting. This meeting is being offered remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter one oh seven of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Please just, please do so at this time. All right, seen, I have a note for the record participating in tonight's meeting, I myself, William Ramsey, the Chair, Board Member Liz Klein, and Board Member Joe Fisher. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have two sets of minutes to consider tonight. Liz, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Joe, you ready to proceed?
I am.
All right, with that, I take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Is there a second motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated January third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a common victor or license submitted by J.M. Food Group Boston Eight L.L.C., doing business as Jersey Mike's Subs, four hundred Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts. I believe we have Andrew Cubley with us tonight. Andrew, I see you on the screen. Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
I'm doing great. Andrew, tell us about your application if you don't mind.
Yeah, so we're a, we're a multi-unit franchisee, home basis in New Jersey. We purchased ten stores in Massachusetts, Hingham being one of them, so super excited. We took over as of January third.
Tom, any concern? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
I think January fourth, right currently, right now, we're under a management agreement for all ten stores because there's a lot of licenses that have to get signed over, so we're doing everything as a, from the H.R. perspective that we can, but right now, we're under a management agreement and we took over effective January, it was either, it was like the January third at eleven fifty-nine, so January fourth moving forward.
Excellent. Tom, any concerns with this application?
Nope, everything's in order.
Great. All right, Andrew, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share something with you. I, I told my, my children that your application was on our agenda this evening, and my, my oldest son said to me that if I voted against your application, that he was gonna change the locks on my house, and my, my things would be on the front lawn when I came home. So I have, I have, I have absolutely no choice.
I'm from Massachusetts, it's good to be back here, and I'm excited to help the community, especially with donations and just working with the local schools and stuff. We're, we're super involved in that kind of stuff, so we're super excited to be a part of it.
Well, that's great. We, you know, my family goes to your, to Jersey Mike's and Hingham probably at least once or twice a week, so.
All right, well, you can give it a try now because now there's actually product.
Excellent. Liz, any questions?
I reviewed the application. I don't have any questions. I know Jersey Mike's has been a good partner in the past, so look forward to working with you.
Awesome, excited to be here.
Joe.
Just one question. I note in the accompanying letter, which was from last month, December second, says the food service license was applied for. Have you received it?
For us, as a, I mean, I'd have to call, I'd have to call to see, I mean, every one of our licenses and the requests go to our home office and then they mail out the three and two.
So I just wanna make sure that's not a requirement for us issuing our victor.
If it is, we will, we'll contingent, we'll make the issuance of the license contingent on that, if you'd like.
No, I, I don't think I wanna vote contingent, but I'll just make sure that to the extent, from an administrative standpoint, if that's an issue, we'll be, but we, we would do an unconditional vote.
Okay.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions or concerns about this agenda item? All right, seen, none, I take a motion.
Well, Chair, since, since you're under, you know, a directive from your chi, from your children, you wanna make the, make the motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm under duress, but I'm, I'm gonna make the motion. I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a common victor license to J.M. Food Group Boston Eight L.L.C., doing business at Jersey Mike's Subs, four hundred Lincoln Street, Hingham, effective through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All is in favor by roll call. Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Andrew, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for joining us. Our next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a dealer in old or second-hand metals and precious metals submitted by the estate sale, thirty-seven Whiting Street, Hingham. I believe Mr. Matthew Shannon is going to present this evening.
I'm not seeing.
Don't see him here, okay. Did Mr. Sha, is this, are you Mr. Shannon by any chance? Oh, perfect timing.
I haven't called him, I was waiting on some.
That's okay. Mr. Shannon, come up to the microphone. Your timing is impeccable, actually. All right. All right, just, just take your name and address for the record, sir.
Matthew Shannon, thirty-seven Whiting Street, Hingham, Massachusetts.
Okay, just tell us a little about your application.
Well, we are a business that sells second-hand items such as furniture, artwork, collectibles, houseware, and stuff like that, as well as fine jewelry and costume jewelry, so we just wanted to add this to the mix as far as buying from the public.
Is this, is this a renewal?
No, it's a new license.
It's a new application, okay, great. All right. Tom, any, any concerns with this application?
Nope, I would just note that the chief's letter requests that we ask the applicant to do a certain thing. I don't know if you guys wanna do that, if you would like me to do it. So the, the police chief is here, and he's asked us to ask you to make sure that when you take any, any product in, that you report it through the police department.
Sure.
That has to happen.
Absolutely.
So when the police, when the police chief asks, it's, it's an ask, but it's a requirement.
All three of them are.
I'm being told, I'm being told.
It's an ask, but it's a requirement, let's be clear.
Understood. All right, Liz, any questions?
With that, no other questions.
Joe, any questions?
I did have a question. You gave your address as a Hingham address, the driver's license attached.
Oh, that's the address of the business. Do you want my home address?
Oh, so we, we have that on your license, but, okay, but that's the, that's not your personal address, this is the business address.
Correct.
Okay, got it. No other questions.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Right, seen, none, I take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a dealer in old or second-hand metals and precious metals license submitted by the estate sale, thirty-seven Whiting Street, Hingham, effective through April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, Mr. Shannon, best of luck with your business.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of the agreement with De La Sando Corporation for sewer dig repairs. We have Matt Cale and Kathy with us. Come on up, Matt, Kathy. Good evening to you guys. How you doing?
Hi.
Good, how are you?
Matt, how are you? All right. Matt, why don't you start off, and then Kathy, you can kinda fill in any details.
Sure.
These are the three standard contracts that the sewer department runs on a three-year basis. One's for our on-call cleaning and inspection, one's for trenchless, sorry, trenchless repair, and the third's for dig repairs. And so we actually, we did well, I think, in the bidding this year. We saved a lot of money.
So there's three awards, three separate awards, although we did one invitation for bid. They had a choice whether they wanted to bid on one, two, three separately, or multiple, or that sort of thing, so.
So the three awards are the three, the three successive agenda items tonight?
Mm-hmm.
So six, seven, and eight. Okay, all right.
Right.
What was, so the, what was the cost last year, do you know, in all, in terms of how we saved the money?
I guess when I say we saved money, it would be between the two bids. We saved, I think, a lot of the, the bidding process itself, we saved money compared.
Okay. Have we used these companies in the past, Matt?
Yes, all three we've used in the past.
Great. And any concerns or issues with these companies?
No, we have a good, good working rapport with all three, which is fantastic.
And do, do we do these, these, this cleaning and these repairs annually?
Yes, so that's the intent, is that the contracts are actually for three years, or would the, option to extend.
Option, one year with the option to extend for two additional years.
Okay. Kathy, anything to add?
No, the bid went well. I think Truax also has a contract with the sewer department for like camera inspection and that sort of thing, too.
The highway department.
Oh, the highway department does.
The highway department, yes.
So that, yeah, so they also have that, but all good vendors and competitive bid.
All right. Joe, any questions?
Yeah, how many bidders did we actually get?
Four, four. So there was only one vendor who didn't get anything.
Okay, right, so I, 'cause I, each contract is with a different vendor here.
Yes.
And in terms of how billing is handled, they invoice us and then we pay, is it expected to be prorata during the year, or does it come all at the beginning, the end? What's the sequence of money going out?
We, we handle prompt payment. It's usually weekly to two weeks. As, as the work's done, the payment comes, the invoice comes in, we review it and process it accordingly.
But I assume you have a payment schedule so that if you're halfway through the money, you've actually gotten half of the work done? It's not like you've paid a lot and then, you know, turns out it's only ten percent of the work?
A lot of the intend, the, the big intent of these is for the emergency end of things, so when there's a major failure or a major problem, we actually have someone that we can call, and they will show up.
Okay.
So the money doesn't necessarily actually mean we're gonna spend it. It's earmarked that we have it, but it doesn't mean we're gonna spend all.
Kind of just the on-call aspect of it.
On-call services.
And so when we do our vote, it's for an amount not to exceed?
Mm-hmm.
Got it. Okay, no other questions?
Yep. Liz, any questions?
And these amounts have already been budgeted for, correct? Okay. And I did see that where you can do an additional one-year period, so were those change orders that we would then see?
Do an amendment.
An amendment to the contract?
Amendment to the contract, yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any, any question for the public about agenda item number six? All right, seen, none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with De La Sando Corporation for sewer dig repairs in an amount not to exceed six hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with the Trucks Corporation for cleaning and inspection of sewers. So along the same lines, anything to add here?
Yep. So this is the same company that is, that Kathy mentioned earlier, that the highway department has a, an agreement with, and it's been going well so far. And we've actually done work with them, from my understanding, a long, long time ago, so it's nice to see them in the contract again.
Kathy, any yet?
Nope, nope, they're a good vendor, and if they're easy enough to work with, you know, it went very smoothly, so.
Great. Joe, any questions?
Yes, what's, how is their name pronounced?
It's Truax.
Truax.
Okay. But I, I've reviewed the agreement, and it looks consistent with how you've presented it.
Liz?
Yep, no other questions, thank you.
Do any members of the public have any questions about agenda item number seven? Right, seen, none, I take a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Truax Corporation for cleaning and inspection of sewers in an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Second.
All is in favor, Joe.
Aye.
Aye. Liz.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries. All right, agenda item number eight, to consider approval of the agreement with National Water Main Cleaning Company for trenchless sewer repairs. Matt, can you talk, just tell us about this item real quick?
So the idea behind this is so to, for lining, instead of digging, sometimes it's more beneficial for us to put a polyurethane liner inside the pipe. It prevents us from having to dig up the ground and make it a big mess. So sometimes if we can do it, we try to do that, that's the intent of this. So we use this a lot, like in some of the downtown areas, if we can, if the break's not that bad.
So you said it prevent, it prevents you, prevents us from having to do what?
Dig.
Digging, okay.
Trench.
Yeah, yeah, no trenching, so that's the idea behind that, and so it's lining. So we just did a big project in another part of town that helps with I and I and stuff like that, which is all very good for the sewer customers. Right?
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Joe.
Just one question. I note that the contractors based in New Jersey, do they have a significant presence up here?
Yes, they're used all over the place.
Okay, so it's not as if we're.
In Massachusetts, yeah.
There's a transportation issue getting stuff up, people up, if we need it, okay?
No.
Great. No other questions?
Do any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? I have seen none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with National Water Main Cleaning Company for trenchless sewer repairs in an amount not to exceed seven hundred forty-one thousand, three hundred thirty dollars.
Second.
All is in favor, Liz.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, the motion carries.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks for your help tonight, appreciate it.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
All right, next item on the agenda is to submit select board-sponsored warrant articles for the two thousand and twenty-three annual town meeting. First item to take up is Article P, which is tax mitigation stabilization fund. I think we're gonna start off with Michelle's gonna walk us through this one.
I'll, I'll take them both.
You'll take this one? Okay, go ahead.
So just to, to put a finer point on a couple of things, just some, as we bring these articles to the board over the next few weeks, and you guys consider them, what you're doing in these initial stages is placing an article on the warrant. That's not taking a position on the article, it's not evaluating the, the language in the, it's evaluating the language, but it's not, it's not, it's not perfecting the language in the article. Adcom will do that through its comment and then subsequent recommended motion. So what we wanna do is get a concept in, in the form of an article that through our conversations and Adcom's work will be perfected in the form of a recommended motion. So this is a very preliminary stage, getting these warrant articles onto the warrant. So I just wanted to preface the conversation with that. To that end, we have three articles that we're bringing tonight. The first two are stabilization funds that we're proposing this year. This would be a new concept for Hingham. It's in, it's in large part a reaction to what we've been talking about for a few years. We knew once we got through the pandemic and we started funding our budget with, with one-time federal dollars and still continuing to grow the budget for the needs that were, that were perceived at the time over the FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three years, that we were gonna need an override in the, in the coming years. That bill has come due, we will be needing an override this year, details of which, of course, are still to be determined, in size and tax impact and all that is, as yet unknown, but we're going to have to have an override this year. Given that, we think that a component, an important component of that, of the, of the commu, of the discussion with the community will be to help the community understand that we're trying to, while we're going to need a Prop two and a half override this year, we wanna mitigate the need for additional overrides in future years, so that we don't need one every other year. That's always been a fear, that, you know, overrides be an overrides and you end up in this cycle. There are ways to mitigate that from that, from happening, and these two articles are one of those mechanisms or tools we can use to try to staunch the tide of, stem the tide of, of needing to produce an override every couple of years. So the first one is what we're calling a tax mitigation stabilization fund. I had been calling it an override stabilization fund, which is an actual thing in Mass. General Law, so that's not an, this is not an override stabilization fund, but it functions in what I think most people speaking English would think of as an override stabilization fund. What the idea here is, is we'll have, we'll have the opportunity, we're gonna create a stabilization fund that will, that town meeting can put money into in years when we have money available through different, different things happen during the course of the year, whether it's a departmental turnbacks or other, other pots of money. We can assign money from the fund balance or from other, other, other mechanisms in town into the stabilization fund so that we'll be able to apply it to the budget in an out year. So if we do an override, for instance, this year, and we, and the modeling tells us we need another override in four years, maybe we can apply, we'll have enough money in, in this tax mitigation stabilization fund to buy us one more year before we need another override. So maybe it's in year five instead of year four. So it's that, it's that outward-looking approach at, again, mitigating the impact of this override coming this year. So that's the first one. That's the tax stabilization. And again, right now, I think the main way that that will be funded, there could be a number of ways, but the main way I see of that being funded is, we will, we'll have to evaluate this, but designating a percentage of the annual departmental turnbacks, so money that goes unused by departments annually as part of their budget, they have a two-million-dollar appropriation at town meeting, they only spent a million, eight of it, that's two-hundred-thousand dollars, gets turned back to the town and drops directly to fund balance. What we're, what we're suggesting is maybe a percentage of those annual turnbacks could be directed to the stabilization fund, so that we have a recurring, an amount of money going into the stabilization fund, so that when we need it, there's a, there's a, an impactful amount in it when we need it. So we're still trying to figure some of that out. Other ideas are the sale of property, unused property, unneeded property, maybe we could sell that property and put some of those proceeds into things like the stabilization funds and the like. So there's a few other opportunities there as well. So that's the first one. Do you want me to go into the second one, or do you want to just do these one at a time?
Can I ask a quick question about this one?
Of course, yeah.
What, what's the benefit to doing, I mean, normally the turnback would go to fund balance?
Right.
So what's, in knowing that we, we benefited from fund balance with the, the big capital project this fall?
Right.
Obviously, so the taxpayers had a big benefit, we're gonna see, realize a big benefit with use of fund balance for foster public safety, which I think, so I think, you know, our pre, our, the predecessors who sat in these seats had a good vision for the use of that fund balance, and we implemented that, that vision, you know, but our, but people who sat here before us put that in place, and then three of us said, yeah, we like what our predecessors thought of that, and we implemented that plan, and town meeting obviously agreed with it.
Yep.
So the town liked that idea. Why, what, why is what you're suggesting better than fund balance being the, the remedy to the turnback and some of the other things going forward? Because fund balance seems to be a good way to deposit some of that money as a savings account or as a, you know, as a reserve system for some of the turnbacks. And I know, you know, with, I know a lot of people in town were like, hey, your fund balance is getting too big, and you're not using it, and it can't be used for operational, right? And that's probably, maybe that's.
Yeah, it's the one-time money concept, right.
Maybe that's the answer. It can't be used for operational, but it, it did benefit us for the, for the capital projects.
Yeah, it shouldn't be used for operational, it could be, but it shouldn't be.
It could be, yeah.
And that's the problem.
It could, but it goes against our, goes against our fiscal policy.
Financial policy, that's right, exactly. So I think the answer, Bill, is a couple of things. One is, if we put the money into a stabilization fund, think of it in essence as a promise to the community, as we have the over, we engage in this override conversation over the next few months, we're gonna, I think people are fearful that we're going to need an override, like I was saying, every other year. And now we're just constantly increasing taxes beyond the two and a half percent that was contemplated by Prop two and a half. So I think if we set up a stabilization account or stabilization fund, we can tell people that we hear that concern, and we're gonna dedicate money to that end so that we can avoid that, that from happening to the extent we can in, in future years. It's a, it's almost like a, a place where the public can look and see that designated fund balance, which is in essence what it is, designated for that stabilization purpose. It's, it's, it could stay in fund balance, and you could allocate it whenever you want to, absolutely could do that in any given year. Stabilization funds are often done so that there's a perception to the public that you're hearing them and you're doing what you say you were gonna do.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. And by the way, everything that gets into it would have to take town meeting vote to put money into it, and a town meeting vote to take money out of it. So it's not like it's some slush fund that, you know, once it's in there, people can go in and, you know, whatever. Everything is all still locked down and authorized by town meeting. And by the way, John Coffin is on the line tonight, if we're looking for any of the more detail about the, about the legalities around these stabilization funds.
And I'm assuming you got the air, 'cause other, I did it through other towns that do this, and?
Yeah, stabilization funds are a common tool for these types of things, yep, yep.
Joe, do you have any questions, or?
I've got, yeah, a couple of questions and observation. I mean, first, the way to avoid future overrides is to keep costs down.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's the main way to address it.
That's right.
And it seems as if this tax mitigation stabilization fund, it sounds like it's a, in many ways, just a change in the financial policy. So just picking up on what Bill was saying, it's, we're putting it into fund balance, but instead of the restrictions on not putting it, using it for operations, we're saying these funds can be used for future operations, for, for operating budgets in future years. So it sounds like it's, it's a change in the financial policy with the added caveat that we need, we will need to go to town meeting to actually allocate this particular pool, which may give us less, less flexibility than we currently have with it all going into fund balance.
Remember, it's, it's be, it would be used and is being created with the assumption that we will need an override in the future, right? So historically, Hingham, and there's a bunch of reasons why we hadn't had to have an override done for thirteen or fifteen years. There's a lot of reasons why that happened, but that's not the norm. We've, we've been looking around, and we see towns on a regular five-year, ten-year, or less cycle needing an override. And so the assumption is you're going to need an override. So you're right, generally you don't wanna use fund balance as one-time money to plug a hole, 'cause it just, to plug a gap, 'cause it just, Bill digs a hole for the next year. Except in this case, you're filling, you're filling a gap in one year, understanding already that you're gonna have that deficit the next year and need an override for it.
But it, it just seems that the decision about whether or not the, there will be an override is up to town meeting.
It does.
And so this is almost preempting that decision, saying, well, we know there'll be one, so let's set aside the money, whereas.
But remember, town meeting would make that decision.
But, but no, no, the, once this fund is set up, money is going in. Town meeting makes, would need to make the decision to have money go out, but they may reject having an override, in which case, there's no access to the money.
They could reject, they could release it, and John could speak to this, but they could release it to the, to the, back to the general fund if they wanted to. Town meeting could always do that.
In which case, it really would not be for purposes of, it wouldn't be a stabilization fund.
It's, it's isolating it from the general fund generally, so that people can see it as an account that we would be able to budget with and understand how to extend the time between overrides.
Got it.
That, that's, it's a budgeting tool.
Okay.
And a promissory note, in a way.
Got it. Okay, no other questions?
Just a, a question. So if we add this to the warrant, will it have an amount associated with it, or we're just creating the fund, we're not actually allocating funds this year?
It's written in a way that you could do both if you wanted to. So I think we'd have to go through that process with the board and with AdCom. But the way that it's written is to create it and, you know, transfer from available reserves if that's what we choose to do.
Okay.
The next one is like, we're, it's a little bit, is it a little clearer? Cause we are actually looking to put some things into it right off the bat. Uh, we want to get into the next one?
Yeah, I mean, before you do though, I'm gonna add one other comment, you know, like, I think this is, I, I like this because last, you know, one of the things, and this came out of Liz's work from the task force, is that, and the three of us all, you know, agreed with Liz, that, you know, we need to start thinking differently and doing things differently. And, you know, and the, the task force came with some proposals and, you know, and the three of us, you know, tried to advance the transfer tax. And we said, hey, listen, we need, we need to tell people, costs are going up, we wanna try to get creative with not putting burdens on property tax increases for people. And in order to support some of our capital needs and, and our operational needs, we wanna try to alleviate some other financial burdens on people. So I like this idea. And I think we, we, you know, we, we put it forward and see what advisory says. Obviously, advisory is our, is our, you know, fiscal sounding board, and we have a lot of financial expertise over there, so let's see what they say about it and, and get, and get their thoughts on doing something like this, to say, hey, we're gonna create this fund to, to try to alleviate the burden of, of potential another one going down the road. And so I, I think it's a good idea, cause, you know, we do need to start thinking about doing things differently. So, so I, I think it's great, you're kinda coming up with some, some different ways of...
Thanks, Bill. I, I think one thing I can add to that, and it answers a little bit of what you were saying too, Joe, is remember too, that as, as we get towards the override conversation, one of the things we've been talking about, what's driving some of this conversation, is this concept of building an agreement letter between the school committee, the select board, and the advisory committee, so that we're all in this same place when we go forward with requesting an override from town meeting, that we're going to hopefully not have an override every year, we'll try to spread that out as we can. But to Joe's point, the best way to do that is to guarantee and commit, that's the key word, commit, to anticipated growth rates, acceptable anticipated growth rates, that will keep us within a certain growth rate amount. Michelle and I spent the day yesterday modeling some of those, some of the impacts of the different types of growth rates that are, that, you know, could be seen. And, and it gets scary quick if you don't have a strong commitment to reasonable growth rates. So you're absolutely right, controlling costs is the number one way to affect a longer term between overrides. Absolutely right. Yep. So, and this is, like I said, this is just a, a mechanism to help us budget for that as we go forward.
Just one, can I just ask one other question?
Yeah.
Sorry, and maybe it applies to both of these, actually. Do these require a change to our town financial policy?
We'll talk with George about that. George Danis, he's the chair of advisory committee, for anyone out there who doesn't know, and we'll, we'll figure that out along the way. It's possible it might, but we, yeah, we're, we meet with him weekly, so we'll bring that up, I'm meeting with him tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll bring it up tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
So the second one, Article Q, is the establishment of capitalization stabilization fund. And the concept here is very similar to the other one, except that we're looking to fund it right off the bat with at least one source. So what was it, Michelle, a year ago, there about, six months ago, eight months ago, a year ago? We initiated an online auction program for all of our surplus equipment, surplus supplies that we have in town. And Kathy was here, she left, I wish she was still here, she's very proud of it, and she should be, it's a great program. We've already realized about $50,000 or so in stuff that historically had been trash, not necessarily thrown away, but you get very little return for it when you use it as turn-ins and old trucks and broken down old stuff that people in the world, believe it or not, will actually pay decent money for if they have the opportunity to do it. So now we put together this auction program, giving people, the world, the opportunity to buy these, these old surplus, this old surplus equipment. So that's happening, we, like I said, we've already realized about 50 grand. We wanna, we wanna come to a place where we're funneling the proceeds from those auctions directly into us capital stabilization fund, so that any given year, the capital outlay committee is given $2.2 million on their annual budget, let's give them $2.25 million by freeing up the money that's in that year's capitalization fund. So now that we can extend our capital, our capital purchases. And again, there might be other things that we decide we wanna do, John will help us with understanding what's legal and what isn't in terms of money we can use, but maybe we have real estate that we end up selling. One of the things, one of the, the opportunities the task force identified was the sale of unused property or underused property. And maybe we get into the place where we get a, a couple of million bucks for some property that we're not really using right now, and we could allocate those funds into stuff like this, this and the other stabilization fund, to help us down the road when we, when we need it. And, you know, part of that analysis, so, just so, you're absolutely right, Bill, your earlier comments about fund balance are spot on, because one of the things that Michelle and I are very worried about is that we don't just stop putting money in our fund balance, because we use fund balance for a lot of really good reasons in a lot of ways every year. We're not, we can't stop doing that. But we also don't need it to grow if our, if our fund balance policy requires that it be 16 to 20% of your total annual expenditures, like it does, we don't need it to grow to 26% like it had. Right? So we're, we're, we're trying to understand a, a measured approach to maintaining a healthy balance and fund balance, but utilizing proceeds that otherwise would have just routinely fallen to it in more, in more creative and surgical ways. How's that?
It, it is good, and again, in our capital budget, definitely needs...
It sure does.
It needs, it needs to be fed, cause it's starving.
It is starving. I'm not sure 50 grand is gonna make a big difference, but better than not getting 50 grand.
It needs to be fed, it's starving. And, you know, as, as I said, it's, I think it's our job as policymakers to, to present advisory in town meeting with some, with some new suggestions and some different ideas, and this is great, we did that last year. Unfortunately, advisory didn't, didn't jump onto some, jump onto some of our suggestions, but that's okay. And we get some other things coming too.
That's right, that's right.
And by law, some other things too, but I think this is great. So, so good, good work, Tom. Liz, you want anything?
No other questions, thank you.
Joe?
Nope, no other questions, thank you.
All right. I know we're gonna go to Emily on the third one, but just, just, just ask if any members of the public have any questions about items, proposed Articles P or proposed Article Q?
So just, just on Article Q, so would the sale that's contemplated in Article S be the type of transaction where funds would go into the fund established under Article Q?
It's exactly what we intend to do. It's not required, by the way, it doesn't have to be that way, but that is 100% what we're expecting to do with the sale of that property, if you all agree.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you know something, actually, let's, let's go to S and we'll, then we'll vote him. All right. Okay, Emily, come on up. Good evening, good to see you, Emily. All right, you want, you want to walk us through Article S?
Yeah, happy to. And actually, I may sound a little bit like a broken record, I've been here before to discuss this particular property. The Warren article would authorize you, this board, to dispose of a property, it's approximately 25,000 square feet, located at 32 Rockwood Road, for residential purposes. The town has an internal process where we periodically review tax titled properties, and we did so for this one in particular, a couple of years ago. And the Affordable Housing Trust expressed some interest in developing it for a two-bedroom single-family home. We also discussed the property with the Conservation Commission, because it backs up to conservation land owned by the town, and they said they had no interest in, in it primarily because of the topography changes between this property and theirs. So the Housing Trust explored the feasibility of actually developing the property, we looked at it from a zoning perspective, and it is a protected lot. However, for practical reasons, it does not appear to be buildable, doesn't have adequate soils on site to accommodate a wastewater disposal system. So they withdrew Warren article just last year after completing the, the soil exploration, and now we're here to suggest that the, the town dispose of it. You know, the Warren article would authorize, but not require you to sell, lease, transfer the property for private purposes. Those likely would be for accessory residential uses, something along the lines of a garage, something that would not require wastewater disposal.
Now that you say that, it does jog my memory now. I remember the last year, yeah, okay. Joe, any questions?
So if a neighbor purchased it, there'd be a merger of the property, of the two properties together?
Yeah, that's correct. For zoning, because it is an undersized lot by today's standards, or at least the frontage is deficient.
Yep. And have you heard any concerns by anyone saying, don't sell it, we think it's a, a great piece that the town should hold? I, I don't think you've had, but I just wanna make sure that they're...
No, we have heard from the butters in the past about maintenance of the property, and so it, it may alleviate some burden that the town bears, so, no concerns about selling it.
Okay, great. No other questions?
Liz, any questions?
I don't have any questions, I remember this pretty vividly.
Yeah.
So I guess, well, just one thing, one clarification, so this would allow us to, we could sell or lease the land, but we're not required to, right?
That's right.
But then it's, it's our decision, or it doesn't go back to town meeting?
No.
Okay.
John's here, uh, well, John Coffin might wanna speak to that.
We can't hear you, John.
John, do you want to add anything? Hold on, let me try to unmute you. Can't hear you, John.
Do you see the hand?
Can we text him the, can we text him the call-in?
Yeah.
We can't hear you, John, but...
John, we're gonna text you the call-in number so that you can, so we can get, hear from you there. I think this is, Bill, I think this is the neighbor, this is the neighbor.
Yeah, I see him.
Just seeing him.
I recognize him, I call on him, he has his hand up.
Yeah, the town took it by tax title in 1990, and then the final judgment was ordered in 2003.
So this sale would actually put this property back on the tax rolls?
Correct, yep. In addition to the proceeds from the sale.
Right, right. No, this is, that's where it is, right here.
Yeah, I, I know, I know exactly where it is. Yeah, exactly where it is.
It's not working.
Emily, is this, this is a part of town that is not sewed, is that correct?
No, that's correct, yeah. Lots of ledge.
John, it better be good, cause we're waiting a long time.
And, and Michael, I do see your hand up, and I'm gonna call on you next.
Oh, here we go. We got you.
We got you.
Hey, Tom, this is John, sorry about that.
No problem. So Liz asked if, Liz asked us, John, we can hear you now.
I can hear you, yeah, I can hear you, you're just putting in, sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah, so the, the warrant article authorizes, but does not require the blood board to sell, so, you do not have to go back to town meeting, you're presenting the hand of the blood board, and they would set the terms and conditions with the sale. They could do lots of things, you could do a 3rd B sale, through an RFP, you could do an auction sale, you would set the terms and conditions, you could do minimum bids if you want, if you're not happy with the bid, you could reject the bid, so this warrant article just opens the door to allow the blood board to go down that road and see what you can get for it, but it wouldn't require the sale and it would not require a future town meeting. And then the proceeds that designate the goal for that new stabilization fund, if that's set up, if it's not set up, then maybe we flow it to the general fund and then the fund balance at the end. So that's the procedure on this warrant article. And then, just quickly, on the other, on the other two, the concept behind stabilization funds, just to remember, is that once the fund is set aside in the stabilization fund that house, they really are kind of set aside for that purpose, and it takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting to spend, so it has a little bit more of a restriction than sitting in fund balance. The idea is you set it aside, designate the purpose, and then a two-thirds vote to take it out, where fund balance is just a majority of the expense for that, the distinction between the two. But town meeting ultimately controls both, and they can move the money around.
All right. And, well, we have John on the line, any other questions for John, Joe? Liz?
No other questions, thank you, John.
John, Tom, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you very much, John.
All right, John, thanks very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, Michael, I do see your hand up there, I'm gonna call on you next. Michael, could you state your name and address for the record?
Hey, thanks everybody, my name is Michael Sadeau, I live at 34 Rockwood Road, I am one of the butters of 32. I am thrilled that this is finally getting some traction, and whatever mechanism we can use through board or John or whatever to put this thing out, I got signed letters from all the other butters that no one has a problem if I put it on it or whatever it looks like, so, just happy to be here and happy there's a dialogue going on.
Great, thank you, Michael, good to see you again.
Bye, question.
All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, all right. What I'll do is, I guess we'll go one by one, so why don't we start with, unless, is there, unless any further discussion on these items, Liz, Joe?
No.
Okay, why don't we go one by one, why don't we start with, we go P, Q, S. So if we're ready, I'll take a motion on P.
I move to propose Article P, Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund as Presented for Inclusion in the 2023 Warrant for Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
All's in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm in, I as well, the motion carries. I'll take a motion on Article Q.
I'll make a motion to propose Article Q, Establishment of a Capital Stabilization Fund as Presented for Inclusion in the 2023 Warrant for Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
All's in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm in, I as well, the motion carries. I'll take a motion on Article S.
I move to propose Article S, Sale of 32 Rockwood Road as Presented for Inclusion in the 2023 Warrant for Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
Second.
All's in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm in, I as well, the motion carries. All right, excellent. Emily, thanks a lot, good to see you.
Thanks, Emily.
All right, next item on the agenda is police officer interviews, all right? So Chief, if you could call in the applicants, I'm gonna tell them how we're gonna run the interviews, and then you could help me kinda direct them, but we'll bring, I'll bring them in first, and then we'll, then we'll probably take them all out and we'll go one by one, if that's okay with you? All right, great, all right. Thank you guys for being here, really appreciate it. All right, so this is, this is what we're gonna do tonight, all right? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna take you one by one, all right? So we'll, we'll have an applicant, you can, you can sit up here with us, the other applicants will wait in the hall, all right? We'll start off by just giving you a minute or two just to introduce yourself to the board and to the community, maybe tell us a little bit about you personally, where you grew up, where you went to school, and some, some, some professional background about you as well, where you've worked, and anything that might be helpful to us in assessing your candidacy. And then each of us will ask you two questions. To be fair, well, I'll ask you the same questions, all right? If there's something unique about your application, I'm gonna give my colleagues an opportunity to maybe ask you a follow-up question, okay? Sound good?
So, Bill, so after we, we ask the questions, are they free to leave or free to stay? What's, what will be the process there?
Yeah, that's a good question. So then I'll have you go back in the hallway, and then at the end, I'm gonna bring you all back in and let you know what the next step is. All right? So don't leave, stay out in the hallway, and when we're done, I'll ask the chief to bring you all back in, I'll let you know what we're, what the next step is for, what's gonna happen after this. All right? Excellent. So I'm gonna have everybody step out except Mr. Crenier. All right? Yeah, come on up, Mr. Crenier, excellent. And just one second, Mr. Crenier, if you don't mind. Need to find my questions. All right, Mr. Crenier, if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself, you know, first of all, your, your name, address, and then give us, you know, an overview of, like I said, where you, where you grew up, and where you went to school, and something about your professional background.
Absolutely. My name's John Crenier, I grew up here in Hingham, I live at 156 HMS Standard Drive. I went to Hingham Public Schools, graduated from Hingham High in '17, went on to attend Norwich University, which is the oldest private military academy in the country. While I was there, I was in the Corps Cadets, Army ROTC, and I enlisted into the Vermont Army National Guard as an infantryman. So I continued to serve... So I continued to serve and train with the Army while getting my degree. I graduated from there with a bachelor's in criminal justice and commissioned into the Massachusetts Army National Guard as an ordinance officer. In between, uh, waiting to start my next phase of military training, I was assistant harbor master here with the town. I then went to the Army's Logistics University for the Basic Officer Leadership Course of Logistics. I then attended the Army's Phase One Explosive Ordnance Disposal School for two months, and then I attended the Navy's Explosive Ordnance Disposal School, uh, for nine months down in Florida. That brings me here today.
Excellent, great. Well, thank you for your service. So are you currently a captain or first lieutenant?
Uh, I'm a second lieutenant right now. I'm waiting for my, um, federal recognition for first lieutenant.
Excellent, great, excellent. Well, if, um, you probably know that we have, um, uh, we have an officer who is also, um, in the ordinance corps, who's currently, um, currently deployed in the Middle East.
We're in the same unit, sir.
You're in the same unit? Are you in the same unit as Griff?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, yeah, yeah. He's, he's a wonderful member of our department, and he's probably some department as well, as you know, probably too, so. Okay, well, thanks for being here, Mr. Crenier. I have two questions for you. I'm gonna ask you two questions and I'm gonna turn to my colleagues and I'm gonna have a chance to ask some questions as well. All right, so what kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work in our community?
For being able to work with the community, um, I think most importantly integrity, obviously, is extremely important. Being an honest, fair, and just person and being able to choose that hard right over the easy wrong is very important. Um, and then just being able to adapt. Obviously, you wear a lot of hats as a police officer. You're gonna be doing a lot of roles. That could be something as simple as just interacting with the community to, um, being involved in something that could escalate very quickly. So being able to adapt and, uh, or less overcome any situation that comes to you.
Great. And my second question for you is, you, you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country, but obviously you've chose to apply here to be a Hingham police officer. So why is that?
Uh, I grew up here. I was born here. Um, I think it's really important to, um, police a community that you genuinely care about. And this town's given me so many opportunities that I just wanna be able to protect and serve and afford people those same opportunities that I had.
Great. Thank you. Liz?
Excellent. Well, thank you for applying and thank you for your service. Uh, what quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give us an example of a situation in which you employed that quality?
Uh, absolutely. Um, I'll go back, uh, what I was saying before, like, uh, the ability to adapt. So, uh, there was a situation that I was in while I was assistant harbor master, um, where I got a call for a individual that struck a rock on a PWC, a jet ski, um, and they were sinking off to, uh, the side of Bunkin Island over towards Hall. So I responded to that, um, and I was able to, uh, with the help of Good Samaritan, get the jet ski and him, uh, on shore to the island. Um, and then I coordinated with dispatch and, uh, the United States Coast Guard to ensure everything there was, uh, squared away. So I think being able to adapt and be in situations like that where a lot's going on, you have to coordinate with a lot of people, is extremely important for a police officer.
Definitely, and we certainly see that all the time, and that coordination is, is critical. What skill do you have that you think would benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
Most? I'd say, um, I don't wanna keep going back to the same answer, but I just really think it's truly important. I've been placed in a lot of, uh, leadership roles, um, whether that be being in the infantry, being an officer, working, uh, with cadets, uh, as a cadre member there. With adapting to all the situations that come and being able to make the correct decision and the decision quickly, um, is, is just very important.
Absolutely, and there's, there's so many different types of calls and situations that you're in that, that is critical, absolutely. Thank you.
Joe?
Okay, completing the round robin here. Um, how would you rate your communication skills? And what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
Uh, I'd say probably an eight or nine. Obviously, there's always room for improvement. But with all the careers that I've been in, I mean, it's all about communication, right? The military is a giant chain of command. So specifically, my job as an officer, especially in the EOD community, is I'm there to, um, brief people on our capabilities and what we can provide to them. So working as an officer and doing that, and then obviously as an assistant harbor master, working with all the different agencies around here, I've had a lot of ability to communicate. So not only that, Norwich afforded me a lot of opportunities in the Army, uh, with leadership and just working with peers and subordinates and, um, things like that to continue to talk and communicate throughout.
Great. And then how are you in dealing with stressful situations? And can you give an example of how you deal with stressful situations?
I think I work pretty well under stress. Um, obviously, that example I gave earlier with the harbor master, but explosive ordinance disposal, that's obviously a very stressful thing. I just went through, um, one of the more challenging schools that the Department of Defense has to offer. Um, I did extremely well. I ended up being the top of my class there, uh, only failed one test out of all of them. So definitely, uh, thriving under stress.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, do either of you have any additional questions specifically for Mr. Crenier's application?
I, I do have one. There's a distinction between being in the military and serving as a police officer.
Correct.
How would you recognize that distinction? What do you see as the difference?
I think the difference is, um, more or less that, hmm, let me see here. I think you're, you're more involved. You're, you're there truly part of the community and the people you're serving. With the Army, sometimes it's hard to see just 'cause it's so large, but, uh, that's one thing I truly enjoy about this department is it's so integrated into the community and your ability to see the people that you serve every day and interact with them. Especially when I was an assistant harbor master, I had a great opportunity to go around, interact with the community, ensure everyone's having a fun and safe time on the water. And I greatly appreciated that, so.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Crenier, thank you very much. Can I have you wait outside?
Okay.
If you don't mind, if you could ask, uh, Mr. Foss to come in.
Will do, sir.
Thank you.
Evening, everybody. How you doing?
Hi.
Good evening.
How are you?
I think you take the time, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Foss, good evening. Assuming you are Jim's son.
I am.
All right, well, I'm very familiar with your dad, and your dad, um, had an exemplary career in the department. So, um, very thankful for your dad's service. And thank you for being here tonight.
Of course, thank you.
Gonna ask you to just take a minute or so, tell us about yourself, tell us, um, well, you grew up in Hingham, but tell us, you know, um, personal information about you, where you grew up, where you went to school, any professional background you might have, and then we're gonna ask you a couple of questions.
Okay, so my name's Jake Foss. Um, I, I did grow up here, went to middle school, high school here, graduated from Hingham High School in twenty fourteen. Shortly after, when I was eighteen, I went into the Marine Corps for four years, went everywhere, made some great friends, saw everything. Came back, stayed local, went to Bridgewater State University. From there, I was going to graduate, uh, shortly, but, uh, I got my card for the, uh, Transit Police. And I, I ended up going to an academy, uh, beginning of twenty twenty-one. Graduated there, been working at the T for two years now, and, uh, you know, it's been a great experience so far, like, you know. One different thing about, about the T, working in Boston, is you see a lot in two years. A lot of calls, a lot of volume, which I think was a really good experience. But I always looked at it as a stepping stone. Uh, I always wanted to work here. I know it's cliche, but I wanted to follow my dad's footsteps. I always looked at him as a role model, and a big thing is I wanted to be in a community that I really cared about. I, I really do genuinely care about this community, and, um, unlike Boston, working in Boston, the city, you know, you, there's a lack in the community, you know? I really want to be in a smaller area where I know the people, I know the places, I can build rapport. Community policing is key and all that, so, you know, hopefully in the next twenty years here, I can leave it in a much better state than I founded it, you know? Cause I, I do care about this community a lot. So here I am.
Well, thank you for your service in the Marine Corps.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, were, were you stationed when you went in the military?
So I was stationed, uh, in Camp Pendleton, California, uh, the, uh, Marine Aviation Wing over there, the fixed wing. Um, I was an aviation ordinance man, worked on Cobras, Hueys, Ospreys, those big two-propeller things. So ordinance, you deal with weapon systems, so like everything, all the bombs, rockets, machine guns that go on, those aircraft, I worked on, I built them. I transported them. I was explosive driver. I've been on one deployment in my, my four years, took me to Bahrain and Kuwait. I was augmented to Marine Security for a year, so, um, you know. I, I made really good friends and just saw a lot over there, you know, so, uh, that, that was good. I still talk to a lot, a lot of my friends over there. And, uh, it's a good experience, really, yeah.
Great, well, thank you. So I have two questions for you. My first one is to you, um, what kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work in our community?
Well, one way, I mean, the way I work now is any interaction with someone, especially negative, is dealing with a good person on a bad day. That, that's the way I look at it, so, um, I always give people the benefit of the doubt. I talk to them if they seem agitated, if they seem angry, you know, patience is absolute key. And talking to them in a manner that you would wanna be talked to is also important. So a, a big thing, especially in the climate we have now, uh, being a police officer now, like, we all know the climate. Not everyone likes police. So I try very hard to show people, whether they like police or not, that we're not bullies just trying to pull you over, take your money, you know, make your day harder. We're first and foremost public servants, and we're trying to make our area, wherever we're patrolling, our town, a safer and better place for everybody. And we're trying to make your life easier, but we're not trying to be bullies, so, um, it's always good to be polite, um, be professional, and make sure people feel taken care of and respected, first and foremost, beyond all else.
Great. And my second question to you is, um, you could apply to be a police officer, you know, anywhere in the country. You're currently on the MBTA Police, as you mentioned. Just tell me, you know, why do you want, why do you wanna be a Hingham police officer?
Well, like I said, it's, uh, it's, I, I just feel like it's my area. It, it's my community, you know, um. Working in Boston, I'm not really familiar with anything, but, you know, in Hingham, you know, this is, this is where I grew up. This is where I became an adult. Uh, this is the home I left, and this is the home that I wanna come back to and, and serve. So the genuine care for that community is there. I wanna make a difference here, and I believe that I can, so.
Thank you. Joe, do you wanna?
Sure, um, I was gonna leave with the question, can you improve the on-time performance of the T? But that's, I, I understand that's, that's outside of your ability.
Out of my control.
So how would you rate your communication skills and what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
Well, my communication skills, you know, there's much room for improvement. Being on countless calls at, at the T, um, uh, I feel like I've gotten much better at that, uh, first and foremost. It, it's important to just let people talk. Um, you know, I, I found it much better to go in slower. Uh, if someone has a problem or if someone wants to say something, let them talk and, you know, you know, this may even be a cop term, but, uh, use echo probing. So if they give you a whole story, they seem agitated, they seem angry, it's just good to, let them talk, uh, you just slow everything down. But they need to feel listened to, okay? So I, I use that now, echo probing, um, where you just repeat some main points that, that they said that, you know, help you understand what they're trying to tell you, but also show them that you are listening. So you're taking mental notes and you're communicating to them that I am listening, and I wanna get to the bottom of this, but it's also, um, not letting the conversation get out of hand. So, um, with, with the communication skills, skills that I, I have exhibited on, on the job, you know, it, it comes to, uh, them feeling respected. You're not trying, trying to control the conversation, nor are you letting them take it over. It's, it, it's a give and take. Um, so you, you respected them, you, you're letting them talk, um, you're letting them vent, or whatever mood they're in. But you're making them feel listened to, and you're also getting to the conclusion of where you need to be at in the conversation. So basically, the, the echo probing, making them feel understood, and obviously respect as well, professionalism.
Second question, uh, how are you in dealing with stressful situations? And can you give an example of how you've dealt with stressful situations?
Of course. Um, well, at, at the T, we're a few hundred officers short, so, um, e- every week, you know, it's roughly ninety-six to a hundred twenty hours a week, doubles every day. And, yeah, you, you absolutely get stressed when you're at work every day, driving in and out of Boston, sleeping in, in your car, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. But what I, I learned helped me is, uh, you know, obviously exercising. You know, taking some time for yourself, eating healthy, just living a healthy lifestyle. When people get stressed out, um, you know, a, a, a lot of people don't have any outlet, but I found that at a very young age that exercise and, you know, especially dogs. You know that from my dad as a cannon officer, you know, I found love for dogs and exercise when I was very young, so it's very simple. Not that I had much time to do anything else, but it's definitely helped me, just living a healthy lifestyle, exercising, eating right, and spending time with your dogs when you can. Simple life.
Absolutely, great, thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here and applying, and thank you for your service. What quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give an example in a si- a situation that you employed that quality?
Okay, um, well, yeah, I, I would say it's a mixture of, of patience and respect because of, of the whole climate. But, uh, many calls that I've been on, um, I, I've been on domestic assault and batteries and, and huge fights that involve twenty-plus people and maybe at Nubian Station, it's a horrible spot, happens a lot. But, um, you know, you, you, you go in and, you know, once everything's calmed down, obviously, you gotta do your job, you gotta calm everything down first. But it, it's to not reflect the actions that you are seeing. So, and many calls I've gone to, everyone's riled up, everyone's angry, everyone's mad. And I think a, a human instinct is to immediately feel threatened, reflect that energy. It's your job to control a situation, uh, relax everybody and not reflect everything that's around you. And you can easily do that without, you know, going hands-on, force, all that stuff. It's just verbal judo. You, you, you can relax everyone, talk to them, and then it, it just snowballs. You make them feel listened to, you make them feel respected, and you can easily control a situation by just building rapport and making them, everyone feel respected and listened to, you know, so, um, I've done that a lot. And, uh, you know, I've gotten better at it through the years, but, you know, the, the, basically, um, showing people that you, you are there, you respect them, you care for them, um, in the way a public servant should, definitely helps the situation. It's what all police officers should have.
Great, great. What skills do you have that you think would benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
Well, basically generally caring about the community that, that I work in. Wanting to, um, community police, talk to people, all that stuff. I, I, I do it now in areas that I work, in Roxbury and Dorchester, uh, at Ashmont Station, Nubian Station. Even there, um, it's, it's very important to familiarize yourself with the people who, who are in your community. And get to know them on a, a name-by-name basis, um, because, you know, by building rapport with people and them getting to know you as a person, not just a police officer, um, it, it all, it all snowballs, you know? The, the community between police and, and the community is, is of the utmost importance. When a community has a good relationship with their police officers, you know, it's just, that's what you're supposed to do. It's the best deal. So, yeah, that's what I would do.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Foss?
I do. Um, you mentioned that your undergraduate career was interrupted.
Yes.
Do you have any plans or intention to resume?
Absolutely. I mean, the only reason I, I did not continue it is because of the crazy hours, but I absolutely plan on doing it. I have about, uh, six credits left, so two classes, I could easily knock that out if I just had more time, you know?
We'll talk to the chief about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you. No other questions.
Question unrelated, do you have a German Shepherd?
I do. So, um-
Axel was a famous member of the department.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, I just got, got a- So, yeah, I just got a, a new boy. He's eight months old and ninety-seven pounds already.
Oh.
It's a good thing I just got the house in Pembroke, because he was in the apartment beforehand. He was tearing that place up, so he has a yard now, thank God. And, you know, every now and then, I take him over to my dad's house, and he has, he has our other shepherd, Rea. We go, we got her in California, she was a rescue. And then he has his two shepherds, actually, his other shepherd, Roger. So every now and then, he has all the kids over.[633.41][633.41](laughter) And, you know, I'll give Enzo to him for a day, he'll have all the kids over, and then I'll pick him up. He's always had to see him go. Yeah. Now, he's living life at his house. He has all his kids, he's very happy.
That's great.
Mr. Foss, good to meet you. Best of luck.
Yes, thank you very much.
If you can wait outside, you could ask Ms. McCarthy to come in next.
Okay, very good.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Welcome, point out, have a seat. Welcome. Good evening to you.
Good evening.
If you could just take a minute to just introduce yourself, maybe tell us where you grew up, where you went to school, and some of your professional background, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name's Gina McCarthy. I'm twenty-two years old, and I grew up in Marshfield, Massachusetts. Shortly after graduating high school in 2018, I joined the Army. I enlisted as an All Source Intelligence Analyst. I luckily got stationed in Schofield Barracks, Hawaii, so I enjoyed my few years[706.12][706.12](laughter) in Hawaii. Over there, I was a security manager for a short period of time, so I was in charge of security clearances. Then I moved over to the Intelligence Company, where I was in charge of East Asia, and my job every day was to submit to the commander analysis over any information I saw coming in from that area of responsibility, and explaining why it was important to our troops and how it could negatively affect our mission. In my last year in Hawaii, I had the opportunity to go over to Special Operations Command, where I worked closely with Marine Special Corps Operations, Army Special Operations, Navy, a few three-letter agencies. And over there, I was a human intelligence analyst, so I was in charge of looking into certain persons, specifically in the Philippines, to ensure that they were okay to closely work with our troops and ensure their safety on their missions. When I came home in April of 2022, I took some time off and I started my bachelor's degree at UMass Boston in September towards criminal justice. So I just completed my first semester there, and I will hopefully eventually finish that, but maybe not now, if I'm able to go through with this opportunity.
Excellent. Great. Are you still in the military?
I am not.
Excellent. So did you get to the rank of E-five, E-six?
I did. I retired as a sergeant, E-five.
Oh, excellent. Great. So was your entire time at Schofield Barracks?
I did.
Oh, wow. Good for you.
I loved it.[790.04][790.04](laughter) No complaints.
So you were Twenty-Fifth ID?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. It's a great unit.
It is.
Wow, you had, you had, that's outstanding. Okay, I have a, I have two questions for you. All right. My first question is, what kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work in our community?
I think compassion, for sure. They need to kind of reach the same level as the persons they're working for and working with. I think it's important to understand that we're on one team, it's not one side against the other by any means. And I think that building trust within your community is huge to ensure that people trust and respect you the way that you should trust and respect them until, obviously, proven otherwise, but I think that needs to be a basis of understanding.
And my second question for you is, obviously, you were stationed in Hawaii, you could've stayed out there, you could've stayed on the West Coast, and obviously, you're from Marshfield, you could, you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country. What, what drives your interest to be, to be a Hingham Police Officer?
So I've always loved the South Shore, obviously, growing up in Marshfield, the beach towns is where I want to be. So I think that moving closer to the South Shore is where I saw myself and where I wanted to be, and this is a great opportunity, so I'd love to go through with it. I will admit, I didn't have a set town starting out. I was looking for the opportunity to be a police officer, where I could be one, but I think this opportunity is perfect for me, and I'm happy where I am.
Excellent. Great. All right. Liz?
Excellent. Well, thank you for applying, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. What quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation in which you employed that quality?
Okay, I don't want to try to use my same answer as before.[899.41][899.41](laughter) Um, hmm, I'm going to use my same answer as before.[905.04][905.04](laughter) I think compassion, again, is important, because I think that there's a basis to any issue or any situation that you're going to come to deal with. I think there's always a root cause to whatever situation you come across, and I think getting on the same understanding as that person who you are facing is important. And I think in my instance, working with soldiers, I worked with people who were maybe ten years older than me and I was still in charge of, and it's a weird situation to be in, but you have to get on that level of understanding and understand that you're fighting for the same cause, working for the same things, and you're both there to just help each other.
Great, great. What skills do you have that you think would benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
Good question. Okay. I think with a military background, I have a good understanding of, one camaraderie, working within a department, that was huge for me, something I've missed since I've left the Army that I think I'll find here. And also, a good understanding of everyone from every place. I met millions of people across my time in the Army that, again, different ages, different places from the world that we all came to in one place, and we were able to work together as a team, which I think not many people can do.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe?
I also have two questions. My first question, which I'm not going to ask, was if you're hired here and Hingham plays Marshfield, who are you going to root for?[998.72][998.72](laughter)
Uh-oh.
Don't answer, you don't, you do not have to answer that.
Please, the fifth.[1002.81][1002.81](laughter)
But I will ask, how would you rate your communication skills? And what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
I think that there's always room for improvement, but I think, at least in my service, starting out, I was in the same situation, similar situation, where I would have to brief people of all places, anything, and I had a very tough time starting out. I will say, it's still not easy getting into a room of people and speaking in front of people, but I think over time, I grew on my communication skills and understood that everyone's a person, you're talking person to person, and being able to communicate thoroughly is important. So I'd say there's always room for improvement, but I think pretty okay.[1044.58][1044.58](laughter)
I will say, in your communications here, your sincerity comes out, so that's great. Second question, how are you in dealing with stressful situations? And can you give an example of how you deal with stressful situations? Specific example?
Sure. Okay. I think I do well handling stressful situations. I think that the way that I handle things is I, again, try to find the root of the problem and go step by step through each situation, because that's all you really can do. Trying to think of a good scenario, I'm sure there's plenty. The first time that I had to brief, when I was in the Army, I was a private, and I had to brief a two-star general, and I found out two hours before, and that was a very stressful situation for me, as you can imagine. And I sat down, I reviewed my notes, and I made sure that I understood everything that I needed to know and everything that I could provide, I knew and I understood, and I went in there and gave it my best, but I took a step back and made sure that I knew what I, the point I wanted to get across, and I understood it.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any follow-up questions for Ms. McCarthy?
No. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you could go out to the hallway and ask Mr. Worth to come in.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. All right.
Have a seat. You could just start off, just take a minute by just introducing yourself to us in the community, by telling us where you grew up, where you went to school, and some professional background about yourself.
Absolutely. So first off, just want to thank everyone for the opportunity, you know, taking the time out tonight. My name is Justin Worth. I'm twenty-four years old. I grew up in Bridgewater, Massachusetts, recently moved to Hingham about two and a half years ago. I graduated Bridgewater State with a criminal justice degree in December of 2021. Since then, I've been working at Good Samaritan Medical Center as a security officer. I've coached high school soccer, because I played soccer for Bridgewater, Rainham, and yeah, that's, I've done construction in the Hingham area since I was like fourteen years old, so I met a lot of great people from Hingham in my time doing that, and yeah.
So where'd you go to high school?
Bridgewater, Rainham.
Bridgewater, Rainham, okay. And you went to high school at Bridgewater State?
College of Bridgewater State.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
My apologies.
No problem.
College of Bridgewater State. Yeah, okay, great. All right. Excellent. All right. Well, thanks for being here. Thank you for, thank you for your interest in the Hingham Police Department. I have two questions for you. All right. My first question is, what kind of skills do you think law enforcement officers need to make community policing work in our community?
So you definitely need to have compassion. I feel like every officer needs to go into every situation, you know, with their head on straight, compassionate in how they handle it. You know, you don't want to come in too hot, because it gives off the wrong vibe. So if you come in with a caring attitude, you know, you're there to protect and serve like, like the job entails, you know? So if you come in with that attitude, you're definitely going to have better results, empathy, sympathy, those type of feelings as well.
A second question, quick second question I have is, you could apply to be a police officer anywhere in the country, any town on the South Shore. What drives your interest to be a Hingham Police Officer?
So I've always had an interest in being a small-town officer. The state level or anything beyond that's never really been much of an interest to me. I feel like you can really, you know, set your roots in a small-town role, you get to know people. You know, growing up as a kid, I was fortunate enough to be, you know, involved with a lot of officers in Bridgewater, surrounding towns, even like fire department, those type of people coaching. They've just had, they had a great impact on my life, you know, kind of set me on the right path, always there to lend an ear, and I kind of want to give that same feeling to somebody else, and you definitely get that when you're in a small community as compared to, you know, the state level, not to take anything away from it, but it's harder to build a relationship with the town and the people. So that's always been a drive for me.
Thank you. Joe?
Sure.
How would you rate your communication skills? And what have you done specifically to improve those skills?
So definitely, my communication skills have improved since I've gone through college and stuff. I think my communication skills have definitely improved when I got my job working at the hospital in Brockton, because, you know, you're working with people from different backgrounds, different mental statuses, especially in that area, different way of life, so you've got to find common ground with people. And, you know, it takes practice to like, you know, kind of get a feel for how to engage people like that. So my, my communication skills have absolutely improved, and they keep improving just by meeting new people, learning about new people, what makes people tick, all that.
Great. Thank you. How are you in dealing with stressful situations? And can you give an example of how you've dealt with stressful situations?
I think I'm pretty good under pressure. I don't find myself very often getting mad or aggravated. I can easily take a step back and acknowledge what's happening from a calmer perspective than, you know, some people might be able to. So when I'm in a stressful situation like at work, constantly, always stressful, just like this job would be, you know, you just got to really just take people in situations for what it's at and what it's worth, and know that, you know, people are going through stuff. They're aggravated, so they're coming across in a different light than, you know, in most situations they probably would if they were just having it. Everyone's entitled to a bad day. Everyone has, goes through things like that. So, you know, I try not to hold that against people. You know, you're upset, you can talk to me, I'll listen, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to go to your level of aggravation and stuff. I'm just going to take it for what it's worth and know that, you know, you're just having a bad moment, and we'll get through it.
Great. Thank you. Sure.
Great. Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for applying. What quality do you think is most important in a police officer? And can you give an example of a situation in which you employed that quality?
So I think, like I previously touched upon, I really think compassion is a very important quality for a law enforcement officer. You know, just based on, every call is different, but as long as you come into it with the same mindset of being compassionate, open-minded, you know, everything should have the same result in the end, no matter the situation. It's, you set the tone. So a hundred percent compassion is a very important aspect for a law enforcement officer to have.
Great, great. I agree. What skills do you have that you think would benefit the Hingham Police Department the most?
I feel like I'm a very empathetic and sympathetic person. On top of that, I have a very good drive towards my work ethic, my problem-solving. I'm very confident in my problem-solving abilities, and I can just reach people. I feel like I have a good connection with most people that I come in contact with. So I think, you know, living in Hingham for a short period of time, but working in it, you know, there's great people who live here. Everyone seems to get along, everyone seems to know everyone, so you definitely want to, you know, give off that same feeling towards people so that they feel like they can come to you as a person and as a law enforcement officer, of course.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
Any other, just follow-up questions?
No.
All right. Mr. Worth, I'm going to have you stay in the room.
Sure.
I'm going to ask, Dave, could you bring any other applicants to have a seat up front and let you know what the next steps are? All right. So just going to let you know the next deep, the next steps for the process here, and I'm going to just ask for feedback from the chief and from town administrator as well. So what I'd like to do is take a week to consider your applications. We're going to meet next Wednesday, we're going to have a meeting next Wednesday. We're going to start at six o'clock, so we'll announce our decision. I'll put it on right at the beginning of the meeting, okay? Right at six o'clock. What I need to do, or what we need to do between now and then, we need to get an assessment from Chief Jones. He provides us with a report on your candidacies based on the police interviews and recommendations. We, obviously, we assess you as well. We need to speak with the town administrator about the town budget and how many applicants we can afford to hire. Obviously, if we could afford to hire all of you, we could, but we have budget constraints as well that we need to consider. So we look at the police recommendation, get a recommendation from town administrator, and the three of us, we don't discuss anything in between meetings, we actually discuss the issue at the meeting next Wednesday. Okay? So if you could be back here next Wednesday at six o'clock, for those of you in the military, eighteen-hundred?[1651.87][1651.87](laughter) All right. Does that work, Tom?
Does.
Chief? All right. Is a week enough for you to get the PD report to us?
There's plenty of that, yes.
Okay. Any questions from our candidates? All right. I will tell you, you all did a great job. Okay? So hopefully, we, we'll see what, what transpires next week. Okay? Joe, anything to add?
Great. No. And you all made, made yourselves proud. It was very, very helpful. Thank you.
Does anything to add?
Yes, very impressive. Thank you. This is certainly an important activity that this board takes on as the police commissioner, and members of the public should know that, you know, their views and their values are represented through this process, so thank you. I know it's a little awkward, but it's important.[1700.54][1700.54](laughter)
Going to make our decision difficult, which is, which is a good thing, so.
Yes.
All right. We'll see you back next Wednesday. Thanks a lot. Thanks for your interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Thank you.
Chief, Dave, Ryan, thanks very much, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the FY24 department budget request, and we're going to discuss debt service. Sue, your timing is impeccable, thank you, all right? And Michelle and Sue are going to take us with this item?
Great, so, on the service.
Who wants to be, Michelle, let's see.
Sure, I can start off. So this is the last FY24 departmental budget request that we are presenting to you guys tonight, so this is our debt service schedule, there's a few different ways to look at it, there's the principal and the interest that we pay, and funds that we've borrowed for different projects in the past. Some of it, much of our debt schedule is bonded, so that's, all of those debt service payments are locked in long-term, but we do have some that are still in bond anticipation notes or bands, so those are short-term. So part of what you're seeing in the schedule for any project that's right now in a band, it's a guess, it's an estimate, until we do the band sale this spring. Those, because of those, those are one-year notes, we only know when we do the band sale, what that interest rate will be, so we will likely be back to you in the next few weeks with an updated schedule, depending on how the band sales go. And then there's also, as we've talked about before, excluded and non-excluded debt, so excluded debt is like what we did in the fall for the foster and public safety facility projects, the non-excluded debt is part of our operating budget, so there's two different components here. But what Sue's done here is put together this budget by the principal amounts, the interest amounts, for a total debt service budget of about 8.2 million for the general fund. Anything that is paid from water, or sewer, or CPC, or other non-general fund sources is not included in this budget amount, because it has different revenues supporting it.
Sue, anything to add?
No, actually, Michelle covered quite a bit. The only thing I can say is, for the public safety in the new foster school, we don't know exactly how much we're going to borrow in February, so those amounts are just placeholders. But anything that we do put in for the expense, we will also put up in the revenue, because it is excluded debt. So it will be a wash, no matter what the amount will be.
Okay.
So those are the main numbers that we'll come back to you with, with solid updates after we do that sale in February.
In February.
February, okay. Liz, any questions?
So, and everything is, is pretty like older, right? Old, except the foster, right, new foster? Am I looking at that correctly? What line is that? Do you see it, 577-016, it says new foster? The 1.75?
Yes, those are the, that's the new foster, and the new public safety is the 175. Those are the two new ones that we're going to be putting on.
Okay.
The ones, if you have this sheet right here?
Yes.
The ones that are in the gray box, that's the band that we have right now.
Right, okay.
So until we do a long-term bond for those, the rates will fluctuate each year?
Yes. And then Weir River is, that's in red, because it's its own enterprise?
Yes, they pay their own. And Lincoln School Apartments, Sewer, and the Country Club all pay their own.
Right, okay.
So something like the water debt is in the water operating budget?
Yes.
And accounted for there, as opposed to in this budget?
Okay, no other questions, thank you.
Joe, any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this, so the debt service figures we see here include interest and principal, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And am I correct that everything is, I don't know if this is the correct term, fully bonded, namely, the long-term debt has been secured, other than the ones that are in gray, which are the bands?
Yes, and, and the two new, like the foster, public safety.
And what is the time period of those debts? Is that indicated in the schedule, like it said, 20-years left, 10-years left?
We can provide the full debt service schedule, where you can see kind of the out-years, because all of these have different time horizons?
Okay.
Depending on when we started them.
And for those that are, where there's a long-term debt, am I correct that the interest rates are locked in at this point?
That's right.
Okay. So those numbers, we've got a high degree of certainty?
Yes.
Is there any anticipation of paying early any of the debts that are locked in?
We just did a refunding a few years ago, the last time we went to bond, you can only refinance after 10-years.
Okay.
And actually, CMA does that every time we go out for bonding, they will look at our debt schedule and see if there are any that we can do a refunding.
So even if we can do it, we might not choose to do it if the interest rate is higher?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Great, no other questions?
Great, thank you. All right, any others to add? I appreciate the presentation, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
It was good to see you, Sue, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next item on the agenda is appointments, I believe, I don't believe there are any appointments this evening, is that correct? Okay. Then we go to public comment, is there any public comment this evening? Seeing none, I would turn to town administrator select board reports, Michelle?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Liz?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Joe?
Nothing this evening.
I do have a quick item. As many of you know, my family unfortunately suffered a significant tragedy shortly after Christmas, and it's wanted to extend my sincere thanks to this community, and on behalf of my family and my brother's family, for the tremendous support that we received from everybody. I cannot thank people enough for the reaching out to us, and helping my brother and us along, and, you know, I love this town, people know that, and just very much appreciate it. With that, I take a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.